Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 9th Board's Elboard Education Meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Both of our trustees, all my fellow board members are present. And for the good of the order, for the good of the order started several years ago by Cheryl Dosier, I've been to this president of the board. And purpose of that was to bring out exceptional items that the board has witnessed above and beyond. And so I just wanted to comment on my exceptional experience. And that's, geez, 12 years on this board. And I wanted to thank the community for, no matter how involved issues were, for the respect that they've shown this board. The faculty of the school, the teachers, the staff, both my kids, you know, have, are in an exceptional college experience thanks to the teachers they had here, the staff, the bus drivers, everyone. And to, geez, there's just so many people. But in the last 12 years, I've really, I've had the great experience with my fellow board members. But this group here is extremely dear to my heart. We went through COVID and we did it. And we kept school and it's, and sorry, if I'm doing this.
You're doing it.
And.
You get me crying.
And your trust in me as a president will never be forgotten. And Jess Pisan, my big thanks to Jess for, well, for holding us all together. And if I'm forgetting anyone. And this one over here, I mean, I had such an honor of hiring, helping to be a part of the team that hired you. And what a great decision we made. And then my first day as board president, right in there, within the first couple of weeks between interim, was with you as a superintendent. And I can't even imagine, you know, a better superintendent. Thank you all. And best of luck, everyone. And you, okay, I, 13 years, 12 was good for me, so. So I wish everybody the best. I'll be following from this. Okay, with that being said.
Thank you. Moving on already?
I'm excited, I'm, you know. It's fine. No, I keep it, you know, I like to keep it.
Yeah, yeah. I like to have a book in the night, too, but I.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any other?
Backing on that, it's, you know, I've had the good fortunes that in the past five years. Thank you so much. From the first, even before, I made it on. And you were incredibly welcoming and it was great showing me the ropes and very, made it a really good experience. Just, just obviously in the past couple of years, you know, with you as, as president. Remark. It's, it's been a joy and thank you so, so much for, for the whole deal. And I hope to come back sometimes, you know, maybe even just to wave.
Oh, that might be fun.
We will, I, I hope, keep you in three minutes as well.
Yes.
But, but seriously, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. And just on that, you know, on board, like Tim, you know, we did everything we could and you came in COVID and you still jumped in and how amazing and so exciting to bring that back for our new board member.
But I gotta tell you, I, you know, talked the talk for 40 years. Then I got on the board to walk the walk. And, you know, I learned so much from you because I learned that, you know, all these textbook profiles I had in my mind didn't exactly the way it works here every day. And I had this idea that it was going to be this way. You kind of said, let me talk to you about how things might work differently. And you were absolutely right. Let me, every, every time you gave me advice was the right advice. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. The district is better for you, having been at the helm for the past three years and on the board for the past 12. Thank you so much.
You know, I can't believe you didn't try to make a run at Jim's record. We had two of them on for 32 years.
I feel like we should do the Jim Hampson 43 years.
Oh, yeah, 44.
Yeah, you know, 40, 40 years of doing the duty assignment.
I remember Cindy when, when she first came on board. You know, she's a young lady and, and she got to work real fast. And she's doing such a great job for a long time, you know, helping people out. And, and I know that from the fact from, from people that I know in the area. You did, you did a great job. And I, I just liked working with you. And you, you, you did fine.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you, everybody. That's why I didn't want to.
I, I do have one more non-Cindy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is, I went to Field Day this week. It was back, like for real this time, and it was awesome. And it was so much fun. And by the way, the new format, I don't know if it's because of COVID or too great a time, so better than the way it ever used to be, like it's certainly, now I don't have to go bounce with like multiple kids there. I don't have people, but so much like less crowded, easier to manage. It was, it was awesome and so much fun. And you got to go twice, which is, so. Wanted to call that out because it was super good. And middle school concert, too.
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah.
School concerts, awards moments. Okay, anything else?
No, that's okay. Okay, opportunity for students to be hired, no significant fear this evening, although we always welcome them. And other students.
I think I'd like to say right at that point, is I congratulate the community for having approved
Oh, yes.
the addition of a student representative to our board. I look forward to that. That's going to be great.
I think that's going to be very great, yes. And hopefully next year, as things get back to normal, like one, more students will come because we've always had students come from history classes or scout for citizenship. And, you know, they certainly can teach us a whole lot. Okay, opportunity for the public to be heard. If anyone would like to be heard, please come to the microphone and.
Evening. I just wanted to go back to something from audit committee. I just want to throw in a plug for transparency. And I do think it'd be good to allow the public to see more details of the budget process. I do think there are people who can understand the numbers.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, then move on to, let's see, we have the hearing, foundation aid increase in ARP plans. Did you want to say anything on that?
I'm going to let Jim do that.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, I'll just recap what we did in the audit committee, reviewing. The state has decided to require plans for foundation aid increases over 10% of our prior amount for $10 million. We hit the 10%, not $10 million. Wish we had the $10 million. But with that, we have to provide information on how that increase is being used. And while we did that during the budget process and through all the increases, it wasn't the way the state was looking for it. So we used a template from BOSI's to put that information from the budget process into this formal listing. And that's what we've done, social emotional learning, decreasing class sizes, other areas like that. And we put it all together to transmit to the states. They wanted public input, so I requested that this be a quote unquote hearing. As well, the, the American Rescue Plan aid, the federal aid, 280 some odd dollars that we received, that requires a plan as well. We've provided that. That was also discussed during the budget process, just formalized into this document that we're looking at tonight.
So Jim, I should have asked this during audit committee. Does our plan get published anywhere?
It gets transmitted to the state. I haven't seen anything about them publishing the plan.
I think we have to publish it to our website as well.
To our website, yes. Yeah. And it is up on Word docs right now, so.
Any other question?
When you say 282, you mean 282,000?
Correct.
Just.
Yeah. That, that was our total, 282,000 was the allocation provided under the American Rescue Plan in. And we're using that during this next year, 2223.
Okay. So can I have a motion? The vote in there?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report, Mr. Supreme.
So I'm, just fair warning. Got a lot. Um, so, you know, at the end of the year, I always reflect a little bit, and I think this year is an important year to reflect. Two and a half years ago, can't believe that, I came here as superintendent. And, you know, I greeted some of you and, and I greeted Cindy. So, you know, when I came here, I really wasn't sure what I was in for. I knew the superintendency gig, you know, I'd been in administration for a long time. And then basically the bottom fell out of everything. And this board has been phenomenal in supporting the district, supporting the hard decisions that have to be made. I cannot be a successful superintendent, as Cindy said, you know, and I thank her for feeling that way. Some days I don't feel that way. And Cindy is the one that makes me feel better. Like she has been my partner, she's worked with us through this, and I can't ask for a better person. So that we missed. But along the same, I did that without crying, Cindy. That's why I was so quiet because it's not my turn to talk during the board discussion. But I think it's also important to talk about when I came here, but what happened? Because I think people forget a little bit, because I did, right? And all of a sudden, in 2019, we stopped. We weren't here. There was no school, there was an uncertainty. I mean, when we look back at it, we can say, oh, all right, we could have done this or we could have done that different. But nobody had a clue what we were doing, let's be honest. And we made it work for our kids and in our community. And then that next year came, you know, we were, we were going to open, right? And I'm going to say it, come hell or high water, we were opening. And we opened K5 completely, K6 completely for our kids. Not all districts did that. And we did something, you know, we made those hard decisions to do those things and give every opportunity to our kid. Was it the best opportunities for all kids? I'll tell you, I had a kindergartner at the time, this is the first year that my kindergartner has understood what school is, right? Because they missed that. And I, and I can imagine the kindergartners came in that time, the first graders, they've missed those things. But this board has continually improved on their processes and the teachers and everyone working together. It was a full community event. Then we move on to this year, and I think people missed that, that we're back, right? We were back since beginning of the year, giving almost every opportunity possible with some restrictions that were put on us that we did, but we still did it. And now if you look where we are today, we're back. We have all of our ceremonies, we had amazing concerts that were coming. And every time you went to these events, the first one since 2019, the first ones, you know, you kept hearing those things. And I think we take for granted as educators, as parents, you know, just in general in our community, that look how far we've come to be back to a sense of normalcy for our kids, right? And normalcy for our staff, and normalcy for our community. So I just want to say that I want to take a moment just to take a second, look at the progress we've made, look at what you've done, and just thank you to you, thank you to the staff, thank you to our community. It can't be done without us. And, you know, I put a tagline in a recent memo, that tagline actually came from some fourth grade students. And it was one school, one school, one community, one heart. And, you know, that's from the mouth of Danes, right? They said it, and I couldn't be more accurate for what we are as a school community. Just wanted to say that. Now I got some updates. Um, Maryam Sa, I'm going to say this, Maryam Sayahi is going to states on steeplechase on Saturday. So she's representing us to state competition, and I wish her all the best and all the best luck. We are moving forward with our one-to-one rollout. So this summer, your parents and community are going to be seeing a lot of information. Sean is working with our IT team. So next year, our one-to-one is moving. So we will be having a one-to-one initiative for this district. Our UPK program, we are stacked, 16 students in our program. Those parents have been notified, so we are ready to go. We have the student board member, Mr. Shea is working with Mr. Glad, and they're working through our policy now. So we're hopefully to have a student recommendation to me, and we'll be able to have a student on the board come July 1st for a recommendation. That's per our policy. We have focus groups coming up. Our district advisory committee has been working, and right now we'll have, the year's kind of short and time has run on us a little bit. So we have three sets of parent groups, in elementary, middle school, and high school. And we have three sets of student groups. Those focus groups will be happening starting tomorrow onto the end of this year. And that's being ran through CAS. The board exit survey that was done, I should have all those results by the June 20th. And then I will share them with the board afterward, but we just don't have them compiled yet. I haven't even seen them. And I want to give an update on the project. So, as you know, we're working through an elementary school project. And we've been really pushing hard to see what we can do and how much we can spend and what it's going to be. And one of the things was, what happens out here, right? Because we're going to want to put the facility out there, and is there bedrock? So I hoped for no bedrock, and I should have hoped for other things as well. But the good answer is there's no bedrock. So we're not, no boulders, no anything like that. Here comes the problem, though, and Rachel will completely understand where the issue is, it's sand. So it's sand and rock. So, um, easy, it's easy digging, but the problem is now that any, the cost savings might be a little bit different because now we have to change the wall to be able to handle that. So I was hoping for one thing, for cost effectiveness in these, but this, so we're, we're still there. I just found this out today, we're going to work with the engineers to get a cost. At least we're closer to understanding the cost. But unfortunately, if the wall was going to be this big, it might have to be this big. So it's just going to change that a little bit because of what we found. So I wish I would ask for a compaction and no bedrock, but.
So did, in terms of the history, at some point, did we, the school put the sand in?
No. It's like river runoff.
This one mapping looks like if that's what we, I'm surprised there's no big boulders on that.
From what they did and all the boring, they said sand and rock, that's it. So we should.
We might get some really cool rocks out there.
That'd be cool, but.
I, I think this is a great opportunity. Sorry.
So, yeah, so anyways, I just kind of wanted to talk about that quickly. So, and the next thing is, you know, and I've talked about this a lot. And, you know, we talked about the social emotional wellness of our students and our staff. And, you know, people talk about safety. Those two things go hand in hand, right? Safety has layers. And it's not a one thing, oh, this does this, and this makes the school safer, this does this, and this makes the school safer. If you look at all the research, it's not one thing that will stop it. And you have to look at what safety is. It's not just the, the massive, you know, shootings and violence that's going on, these horrible tragedies. It's the things that I talked about. It's drug use, it's, you know, self-harm, it's undiagnosed mental health. All of these things are compounded together, you know, unspoken domestic violence. These things are all incorporated together. And they all go hand in hand with each other because they can erupt into school violence, they can erupt into other things that go on. So you have to, when you're developing a safety plan, you have to look at the layers that are approaching. And, you know, we as a district, we are looking at our social emotional health. We're looking at hardening some of our escapes, such as putting, you know, ballistic shields on some of the windows. It's very simple. It's just a film made by 3M, goes on a door, and it stops breakage, right? It doesn't stop it, but it hinders it. And if anybody knows anything about safety, it's, you're talking about seconds, right? Minimizing impact is minimizing seconds. The more time that you can move, you know, save on something, the better it is. And you have to look at all of those things together. So I know something's been coming up a lot in our community, and I wanted to bring it up with our school. And that's, I, I've heard a few times about school resource officers. And, you know, people have emailed me and I've heard some talk about it in the school community. I know this district has once before looked at school resource officers. So, and I haven't had the conversation with the board of, you know, if this is something the board would want to do. And I just want to kind of be a resource at this point. I can talk about school resource officers, go and do in the face and have a conversation about it. I've worked with school resource officers the majority of my career. And I've also been in development of a program at Schenectady County. So I do have an understanding of the pros and cons of having school resource officers and that. And I just wanted to know, you know, again, leave it really up to the board here of where you want this conversation to go. And I can answer any questions you may have or understanding of it, or really just kind of go from there.
Okay. First blush, I would tell you, I think having somebody whose assignment is to be the eyes and ears of the hallway and kind of keeping an eye on what kids might be troubled and offering a little bit of a buffer between classroom and home and keeping an eye on for red flag, the red flags, the, the signs that some kid may be troubled, being of source where somebody might come to. So they have some kind of like guidance counselor mentality about them. That all sounds very appealing. And you start talking about you arm that person. I don't know where to go with that. Not sure. And I, I would say if it had been a situation where there had been these shootings in the past elsewhere and that school resource officer had been successful in thwarting that, it might be an easier call for me. But that has not been the case. There has not been that level of success that one might have hoped for. So for me, it's a really complicated, I, I don't have a clear answer.
Now, we did have a trial. Rob, Jim, I think you two were the only ones on board with me.
Yeah, the whole process and then the.
No, so we did have, that we did not pay for, was put up as a trial through the sheriff's office.
Trial of what?
Just.
Oh, SRO.
SRO. And it was halftime, just for your information, please chime in because you guys, because, so. And we did have someone halftime. And again, it was a trial to see and.
So I think, I mean, I think a couple of issues and learning experiences that came up there. One, you know, if, if we were to embark on that sort of program, we had, we had multiple campuses, right? And one person spread across multiple campuses, not ideal for certain situations. But can, you know, but, but do we have to explore doubling costs, for example?
I can answer that question. Some school resource officers, and again, I think the, the successful resource officer is what you said, Tim, and some of those things, but also a social worker can do a lot of those things as well. I want to point that out, right? What those school resources officers also can build that we can't build is the knowledge of, you know, emergency response. Being able to be a buffer between the police and, and that, right? If you have a school resource officer, you don't have to call dispatch for everything. You don't have to call law enforcement, you already have one. And a lot of times, they will guide a school district in a very different way, sometimes help them through situations that school districts were just armed, we don't have them understand it. Some of the things that you, you do see is they split time, right? So if you want a resource officer, and they will be armed, right? Because they are police officers. I don't believe in, you know, it's a school resource officer. It's not an armed security model. So it would be a police, you know, a law enforcement official. That's what those programs are. They can split their times between, between the elementary, so they would do like, they would, let's, I'm just saying here what I've seen in other districts, is you go into high school, you do your entrance into high school, you watch all the different things, and you would go down the elementary school, you'd watch your entry, you would do traffic control, all of those different things that go along with that, maybe even crossing guard stuff, you know, to help with those things. And then you would go back to the high school or middle school where you're needed. And then they can add programs and stuff, but they were, they are shared. Like it's one person would be shared for one campus. I don't think a school our size, I, you know, if the, if the board wanted to go there, I couldn't recommend more than one.
So I guess the other, a couple of things that I think we were, we didn't do, didn't do as good a job last time as we could have if we were to embark on this process, right? Like being really clear, and we're already starting to do that, right? But around roles and responsibilities, what we want out of that program. So last time it was very much a push versus pull, right? The sheriff's office was giving free SROs to schools in the area, and it was, you know, it was something that we hadn't put any thought into before being authored, right? And, you know, being able to take some time and, and understand, you know, what, and I think you've done this before, Frank, for sure. I don't know if we as, we have a board as a board, maybe not, certainly the other people who have been on who went there for, or have, have had a chance to, you know, what are our goals for, what do we want to do with this? And then what would be the role and responsibility of that individual, you know, especially as we put it in the contract, right? So the contract we had last time was a bit, I don't think we had too much say in what. Just a couple of things to straighten my mind from the last go around.
Yeah, and however, to your point, Tim, with the guns, we did do a survey of family, a family survey, and that was key in the elementary school, I mean, it's, you know, it's different times now, so I don't know if that would have changed, but the arm that was, you know.
Did not want that.
Did not want that. So, but it's a different time now, so it might be interesting to get that input again, right?
Yeah, I would recommend if that was something that the board wanted to do, is to do something like that to see. To have an understanding. I do know that we do increase our, you know, I have increased police presence since I've been here because I asked for police officers to come and they walk the buildings. I want them to be familiar. And then, you know, the other thing is, I don't want every time a police officer here is to have every single person in the board going, oh my God, there's a police officer in the building. No, they're just here to visit, it's okay. You know, they need to be familiar with our buildings as much as anyone else because if they're getting called in for a response, they need to understand where our rooms are. So I open our doors to our, to our law enforcement, both troopers and sheriffs, because we want them to be present. And when they do come in, they bring their dogs. And I gotta tell you, in the elementary school, you know, no work is done in the elementary school when the police dogs are there. You know, it's, I mean, I have elementary school teachers here who are laughing, but literally those dogs, those, I mean, they come up to it and they see the dog, right? The kids see the dog, they don't see the gun.
Yeah.
But the dog is there.
SRO bring a dog to school?
It depends on your SRO.
Yeah.
You're lucky enough to get one with a canine.
Like I said, it's different times, so people might think differently, like, you know, navigate.
But I think it is important to solicit that feedback again.
Yeah.
We did do it proactively, right? Last time, we did try to solicit feedback, but it was very, it was very rushed. We had a kind of a hard deadline when we had to give, we had to give a yes or a no. But, I mean, right now, we have how many months until the school year?
Oh, I have not had any conversations outside of this room right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have time.
There's plenty of time ahead of us where, you know, I think we can talk to the community and run some engagement.
Frank, you're assuming an SRO is a police officer and his arm.
I'm not assuming, that's what they are. It's a school, like, so when I developed, so when I developed SRO programs and the recommendation that's, that if you are going to have an SRO program, it would be a law enforcement agent, you know, and you would be contracted out with a law enforcement agent. RG?
So they don't have to, I mean, they could be, it could be just a private contracted security person who's not a small law enforcement officer.
I've had, in that you, I've had security, yeah, and there are security officers. So, I mean, do you mind if I, because I've, I've also worked with security officers, I can answer any questions. So again, I want to be a resource for the board. And that's, you know, please ask these questions and I think we're happy. So security officers are an option. Many times, schools, they, they get community members who have, in like law enforcement or military background, or a lot of times, schools hire retired police officers. So a lot of times, like your, your former, your, you know, retired resource officer or school officers, they become your security monitors. And you have them monitor your hallway, and they do a lot of very similar things. You know, they, they speak to kids, they monitor halls, they do traffic, and that is an option, but they are not armed. Like, it would be very clear, they don't carry any weapon yet. Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that.
I think the other.
It wouldn't be a recommendation by me.
Right, like an SRO program, at least as it was pitched to us before, is, is more than about having an arm out there. And to your point, Tim, right, most of the data does not bear out that having armed police presence necessarily may have that much of an impact in that sort of, right? In the, in the scenarios that most people are imagining when they're wanting that, right? And, and again, at least as it was sort of pitched to us before, a lot of the benefits of an SRO program are, you know, community involvement, then getting more students, students can be more comfortable with the police. You know, with, there's a lot of other soft benefits that, that they say go along with the program. And it's not supposed to be, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sure it is too, right? But it's not, you know, it's just here to have somebody with a gun. That being said, I don't think there's an option to not have that officer have a gun because they are a police officer who is expected to, you know, they may. because they are a police officer who is expected to, you know, they may, at least with the program that we had, there could have been times where, you know, that SRO had to go respond to something else if it happened in the area, right? And they have to, especially because that person is part time and they may have to lead the school to respond. There's still a police officer first and foremost.
Yeah, and there's no way the sheriff or any other law enforcement agency allowed their officer in here.
Can't imagine.
And I've worked with resource officers since 2005 and I've never seen an officer unholster their gun or a case. So.
What was that again?
I've never seen an officer of a school resource officer unholster their own weapon. And I've worked with resource officers since 2005. So I, you know, even though they have them as part of their, you know, their uniforms, I've never seen them use them in any of those things.
And if I'm correct, if I remember correctly, they are here for safety in that way, not to arrest kids in the bathroom or anything like that.
Yeah, actually, I've, I've seen arrests go down. In my experience, arrests that actually went down having resource officers in the building embarrassing going on.
Can we talk about different options?
You, whatever the board would like.
What would it look like if we could hire more social workers or mental health providers that more kids have access to just instead of small pocket of kids?
So, and I think that is a positive thing. You can add more mental health supports, but that's why I talked about the layers, right? You add those mental health supports, but we're still missing a hardening aspect. And, you know, that's the one thing is.
But maybe you don't need the hardening aspect of these, more support. Like, we're talking limited resources, right? So.
Again, I think it's a direction and conversation for the board. You can have, and I don't think there's one right or wrong answer, right? If you look at, you know, in the region, majority of school districts have SROs. There are a couple of school districts that have said, no, I'm not going to hire SRO. I'm going to hire more social emotional. Does that stop the school violence? Does that stop some of the issues in, no, it doesn't. You know, and neither does the SRO. But it's about mitigation, right? What layers will mitigate and which ones will be the right answer? And as you know, the data hasn't been clear on, you know, SROs and school violence. But you have to ask yourself as a board, which one, which one does the community want? Which one does this board want to, you know, look into? And then, you know, have those conversations afterwards. I'd be more than happy to look into anything that you'd like, but I need to understand what direction this board would like to go.
Well, I mean, I don't feel comfortable asking the community about that armed person here before, or even asking them about.
I think timing is really important. And I think it has to go on a slow push on this thing. And, and, and do a lot of talking in the community. A lot of people, you know, are really get up tight when something like this is, is taken out and rammed, rammed into getting it done. You've got to, you've got to get people to understand it, really understand it, especially parents. And, and, and it's going to be, you're needed to, to, to work with the kids in the school. It's not just jump in and put something like this together. So you've really got to think it and think it hard. Because the last thing you want to do is really get people going, 10, 10, 30.
Yeah, and Trish, the only reason why I'm bringing it up is because it was brought to my attention. So parents in the community have reached out and asked. They have also called the sheriffs and the sheriffs have reached out and said they've gotten parents. So that's why, for me.
Probably have parents asking for other options.
Well, that's why, and this is why I brought it to the board, because I could say, all right, I'm going to have it on my desk and not do anything. We're just bringing it here for a discussion. So that's why it's here. And that's why I think having it in the open, having a conversation with everybody, hearing what you would like to do, and then talking about options that are out there is really what I wanted to kind of facilitate for our discussion tonight.
So I have a couple of other, one other question. And I don't think it's any secret either, I have the only person who voted no when we did this before. But the reasons for that were, you know, losing some degree of discretion. Things like arrests for a fight in the hallway, right? Where, you know, ask questions of sheriffs. They're like, well, we can't give you that, you know, if I see an arrestable offense, I'll get arrested. And I don't know if there's something to be doing in the contract or just partnership about that sort of thing. But then the budgetary constraints, which I think are going to have more imminent pressure here. And I don't know if it's how most of the districts fund them. But we ran into what was my nightmare scenario, right? We had this free SRO. And then I can't remember if we did pay for it a little bit or we were about to. But we ended up having to put that up at this budget time against a teacher, right? And it's like, do you choose, you know, a cop or a teacher? And we really chose teacher, we couldn't cut that program. And, but there were a lot of people who were then upset that we took away an SRO. But that kind of thing, even if we're somehow able to afford one in the near future and it's something we all want to do, that situation is not going to go away and that's going to come up again, right? And, you know, do you, how do you, I don't even know if we have the right sort of framework here at the moment to properly evaluate that sort of situation and have that discussion in the right way that we're probably making the right decisions. It's just, it's tricky, that's all. And it stinks to say budgetary pressures are the kinds of things that impact that, but they really do. And so all that said, leading up to my question, how are all these, you know, I keep hearing from lots of people, we're one of only two districts in the area that don't have an SRO. How's everybody going to afford this? Because it's, that seems wild.
How do your general fund?
They just start just paying out of their, and when they're coming up with, you know, we only have X number of dollars, they're just cutting teachers instead or cutting aides.
I don't, I can't speak towards what those districts do.
No, I'm not.
So all I can speak towards is how it's funded. And, you know, it's funded through your general fund.
I think the difference here, I would be right there with you, Trish. I would tell you, I'd much rather find these kids when they really need you and they have a quiet conversation, give them the help that they need, social emotional support. That's far more foundational than an SRO. But for visibility purposes, you have this SRO. It's, I don't want to make it sound, I don't want it to sound flippant or facetious. It's not just optics. Those people serve a very important purpose. But there's a visibility with an SRO that you don't have with a new counselor, a new school psychologist. Who's better for those kids? Probably the psychologist. But for the community's comfort level, perhaps for people who are in this building, their comfort level, that visibility has value. Now, I don't know, you know, which is better. But I think they both offer something if you could have it. But it's a, it's a, it's a something that offers some visibility versus something that might be more fundamentally important for a kid's well-being. And I don't know where the difference is.
Would, would this be like a good discussion item? I know there's a board, I think it's on the safety committee to get that kind of, oh, Trish.
I would say probably no.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of law enforcement that's also sits on the safety committee. So that might be a very skewed conversation, just, you know. I honestly feel like if this is a conversation that needs to be had, the district advisory committee has teachers and has some parents. But again, I think this, I think really the board might want to find a better avenue if they want to have a conversation with it. That, you know, this one, but either in maybe a facilities committee or a committee maybe that deals with oversight of that.
Well, I was looking, because I don't know who just said that, but they had a good point of how do the people who work in these, they'll make it feel. You know, that's, that's really important.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
Some committee that.
Right, and the district advisory would be able to help support that.
So maybe that's it.
I think there's multiple levels. But again, I think the question's going to be is, is this something that you further want to have a conversation on? Or is it?
Well, I think.
Is the conversation just about hiring someone? Or is it about all of the layers that you've talked about?
Well, I think what Trish says, you know, it's, you know, what other options can we talk about? You know, Archie said security monitors. You know, we said that, I mean, there's a ton of layers that we do talk about on our safety committee. And, you know, again, we were one of the only schools in the past few years that has done a safety audit. You know, and, you know, and I'm kind of happy that we did that. But, you know, like, we do a lot of these things, we just don't publish it because you don't always want to say the safety things you're doing, right?
Put out where you're.
Exactly. But, you know, I think the conversation should be is, you know, and this is what's happening in our community, I believe, is people are talking about, how do you keep the school safe? What are the options that you can add and layers you can add now that we currently don't have, right? SRO is one, security monitor is one, more social emotional, right? Those are all things that you can look at. You know, we can also talk about other programs. You know, there are, there's ability programs that districts can bring in to work with kids like, like the OVAIS anti-bullying program, right? There's other programs that you can look into. So there's a lot of layers here. But I think, I just want to bring it out to the forefront with the board and then start this conversation with you.
This is the conversation. This is what, you know, front page right now. And I can't, I don't think we can avoid having the conversation, but it has to lead us somewhere. And, you know, one thing to, back to you, Trish, if you read the front page of the Times Union today, the controller had this report, very small representative sampling of school districts. But they're not, they're supposed to have done certain things in the spirit of school safety and mental health. And have these big plans in place and have put all sorts of resources into things to support these plans. Vast majority of them have not been successful in doing what they said they were going to do or they've ignored it completely, even though the law says they're supposed to do it. So we've been, not we, school districts in general have been very lax on this issue. I don't know why, but I, I think this has been a wake-up call lately and I'm glad we're talking about this.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, whatever we do, it's important to continue the conversation because people want to have a conversation and they want to see, you know, like wherever the progress ends up leading, doesn't mean we have to do something right now, obviously tonight, doesn't mean we have to do something next month. But, you know, kicking off a longer form conversation, I'd personally like to see it lead, I guess, towards being able to sort of take the temperature of the community and our employees a bit better. But, you know, I don't want to rush out a survey or something either, right? So how can we get a better understanding of what parents want, what the community wants and what our, our staff wants, right? You know, and we need, we need to think through, you know, what some of those options are because it can't just be a binary, here's an option, do you like it or not? But, you know, if we can sort of put together and think through ways to ask those questions to get a better idea of how they're feeling about, about, one, what would make, you know, as a parent, what makes you feel safer? Or as an employee, what makes you, and what are some of the, here's some of the tools at our disposal. I don't know what all those are off the top of my head, but let's come up with it and ask.
We're not going to have this conversation. I guarantee you, there are people out there right now who have got people, facilitators who they've brought in to help facilitate a conversation. Somebody who's independent and can look at this thing very objectively and ask the right questions of staff and students and parents and anybody. And just try to, you know, come back to us and say, here's what I'm hearing from your community. We might want to consider something like that.
Yeah, I just want to state one more very obvious thing that I want to be clear on it is we didn't budget for anything, right? So I do want to be clear, like, there's, you know, we didn't put money into this, right? So, you know, anything that will be done, you know, it does have budgetary, you know, and general fund consequences as I look at Jim. So, you know, I do want to be clear is this is a real, like, just a conversation because there's, there's no money actually denoting, here's what we're doing. So just.
Well, we do have money budgeted for certain security upgrades and enhancements.
We do, yes. Those are things that we've already planned.
Those are things that we've already planned.
Planned, budgeted, but anything new, there's no, so let's remember that there's a lot.
Right, but back to the layers of mitigation, right? I think if you're going to have this conversation, it's important for us to lay out what all those layers are that are currently in place or in progress.
Yep, agree.
I don't think we've done a great job of that.
Yeah, and if, you know, communicating out what we are doing and how we are investing over the next year and that sort of stuff, that's important as well, right? Yeah. There's other things people want us to be doing that we budgetarily cannot do, making sure that we're communicating what we are doing and how. Because it hasn't been an afterthought for us.
Frank had an amazing email that came out that explained a lot of it. And it is so important for us to look at our infrastructure and the, the people that are part of this district. But if we could, if, if we don't look at our infrastructure and do follow the things that the safety audit showed us, then it doesn't matter, we hire. So we have, we have to keep working, I think, on, on the things that are on the safety audit that are things that we should be addressing. And think about all those different aspects of the layers for safety. Because it's not one thing. There's no one button you can press to make everything perfect.
That's what.
I wish there was.
No, there's not. And that's why I really wanted to preface when I started that and even brought it up is there's no catch-all. That's why we focus on so many different things, you know, and continue to do them. You know, and a lot of times it's really looking at our practice, right? What we do and how we do them. Um, yeah, so continuing. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, for bringing that up. Okay. Moving on to approval of minutes and action items. We have a lot of pretty much routine things on the agenda, so I'll group them. I'll go through each one and please let me know if you have any questions. But it will be 4.1 to 5.9, minutes of regular meeting, pressures report, personnel items. And they include some department chair, leader appointments. In July, on the July 6 re-lear, there'll be all the coaches and like six lists probably of.
Maybe not all our coaches.
But several, yeah, there'll be several more, like I said. Okay.
And I do want to say that one of our new hires is here tonight. Sally Martin's here.
Oh, hi, welcome. So we'll, we'll highlight you on the agenda. Thank you for coming. Okay, Bosie Subless, approval of classroom rental agreement, out of town student field trip request. Boys rate when they come in early. Cole Summer Writers Institute 2022, is that that new this year? Another one of those that this year, very wonderful program. Management confidential salaries. And then the July organization meeting date, which will be at 6:45 on Wednesday because the fourth is a Monday. So on Wednesday, July 6, 6:45, followed by the regular meeting. Any questions or?
And I had originally had a July meeting, but it's a different date. That's not happening. It's only July 6.
Only July 6, starting at 6:45. Unless there's a need for, yeah, executive session or anything. But no audit, right, Archie, just, we're done. Okay. So any questions on any of that or comments?
Nope.
Okay, so may I have a motion to move 4.1 to 5.9, please?
Move it.
Second?
I'll second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, welcome, formally welcome. Okay.
I do have to say that Ms. Martin's been with us for a year already. So she, she was a year, I can't even think of it. Ms. Martin's been here for a year now, she's now full-time probationary.
Okay. Confusing.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so moving on to old business. Archie, Chair, we had write it committee, could you please get this a little rundown?
Sure, thanks, Cindy. So we met earlier this evening. We reviewed our claims audit reports, a document outlining the money that we spend in certain functional categories. And that's a document that has not been shared. We've been asked to share, so that's something that I think we'll certainly talk about more. We reviewed the reserves and our fund balances, school under profit and loss, and also the foundation aid and American Rescue Plan plans. So that was all sort of regular business that we covered earlier. One issue that came out of the claims reports is that we should be taking a look at policies. So we'll raise, noted that and we'll get to that in, in upcoming policy committee meetings. And then we kicked off a discussion about athletics expenses and sort of what, what our current offerings are, what our participation is. We looked at what's budgeted, what we're spending. We didn't have time to really get into how certain decisions are made. But that, I think, will have to table. We are running out of time and circle back to that. But really, this was a preliminary discussion to get the lay of the land in terms of athletic funding. Data was shared, it'll be revised slightly. The board will review it and they'll come back together and figure out next steps. Excellent.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, curriculum committee, Tim, Chair?
Yes, my notes are a little cryptic. I just received a couple of minutes ago. I just received a couple minutes ago. May 24th, Curriculum Committee met. We started off the meeting with the announcement from Frank that the history Regents exam had been canceled for the year. And the rationale for that was ridiculously ambiguous, but okay. Then we also were told that there's a Regents waiver for other Regents tests that if you scored between a 50 and a 64, but passed your course. I think we got, we got that all covered, right? We can handle that?
Yes.
All right. We talked about class sizes, high school class sizes for the upcoming year. Somewhere in the range of 18 to 23, of course, that's kind of very, pardon? What else is high school? No? Okay, elementary school, 18 to 23, middle school, 22 to 25. And then we talked a little bit about elementary schools having a teaching assistant plan for every kindergarten class. Talked about an extra section that would be assigned to where it's needed in the elementary school, kind of sort of as a little bit of a buffer as the size. Didn't know exactly where the student enrollment was going to bubble up, but we're ready for it. Jeff Vavenzio talked about the what I need or win block program at the elementary school, which provides for additional 30 minutes of reading time for every grade, that's how I understand it. An AIS teacher to target intervention services for those students who need it most. And by having that, it helps supplement supports for kids to limit, if not eliminate, some of the pull-out programs, so they don't miss some of their class time. There is some conversations about the planning for this change and for the professional development time needed to make it happen. We also talked about a national student clearinghouse program that collects post-secondary data for students who have graduated from our school system. They operate nationwide, they capture about 97% of the students, both public and private schools now. And it helps communities better understand the student outcomes, the pathways, what happens to people when they graduate from here, who goes on to college? Do they stay in college? They graduate in a timely fashion? What are they doing afterwards? It's all part of this program, and it was exciting. And then we also wrapped it up with a little discussion about summer tutoring. There will be both elementary and middle school students who will be eligible for summer tutoring. The focus will be on reading, writing, and math. Did I miss anything? We can't remember, can we? I know, what am I saying? But that's what we, that's what we talked about. It's a good meeting.
Thank you, Ken. Facilities Committee, Rob Chair?
Yeah, we had some field maintenance updates. Satellite baseball field was backed up and running, used. Soil survey was done, reviewed with Rachel, and she said that fertilizer plan is good to go, right? Field's in good shape. Guess we talked about the prospect of purchasing a half acre property, satellite location, maybe baseball field there, specification. Sure, I remember that part of it. Where?
Well, we said it'd be nice to do so.
Oh, okay.
We actually never had any conversations with anyone about it.
See, I'm using the cheat sheet.
If you, because we said if we got that property, then you could actually have a full-length baseball field. All right, and then we could have a full soccer field. It's wishful thinking. That's really what it is. That's all.
The satellite field sign is getting fixed, and actually I saw it's down right now, so it must be getting ready to go up.
Yeah, it's getting wrapped.
Yeah, so it's going to be a beautiful wrap, which is going to be cool. The fields and grounds, addition of cross-trained first day, fair for unexpected absences. I think we probably have less people able to do some of that stuff than, than maybe we'd like, so. Nice. Playground update, we haven't had one of these in a while, a long, long, long while, like four years? Long, long, I don't know. But it's back. And we start talking about state ed approval, so we playground again. So after meeting the playground committee, we learned, and there was, there was a stage that was purchased. So raised a whole bunch of money, bought and lost playground, also bought a very cool stage that, you know, was, you should be installed down there, but couldn't do it at the time because of some ADA guidelines and some other quite open questions with state ed approval. It would have taken a lot longer than our party date. If I knew installed, I'd get that stage through the process. But it's still sitting around and kind of ready to go whenever we are. So we're starting off the process with state ed, right?
Actually, we're meeting on Monday, myself and some of the playground committee. We met with the architects. If they make some changes on this, it can become ADA accessible, and it will not have to go to state ed. Just per what our architect said. Our architect said that, you know, you, but you have to make, it's got to be under a certain amount of inches. You have to do certain things. But if we do that, then it will be acceptable, is what the architect told us. We're going to see if it's capable to make it into the levels that it has to be, to be able to be where it needs to be for just a platform. So very low, low platform with a dirt ramp and, you know, multiramp going up to it. Really meeting the needs, but, you know, architect giving us our stamping for the end right.
We, we had a 100K project update, this is all a month ago though, so I'm sure stuff has changed wildly since then. There's some funny looks, I don't even know if I want to.
Well, we're going to talk about the facilities committee, but.
Okay, well, no spoilers. So, you know, next update, we'll give a real good update on whatever Frank is going to tell us. When is that, next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. By the looks of it, it'll.
Oh, it's, it's good, we're just, I want to get it finished.
Yeah, all right. We talked about used facilities, you know, clearly looked at current pricing, given the outside groups. Requesting used pack, you know, limitation guidelines, or potential outside groups, you know, just in case anything happens. EPC update, build list of vendors, the potential needs of lighting usage, and some mechanicals being reviewed. New events that haven't been upgraded, as well as some building automation. External doors are also good. Sure, we'll have some new stuff there. I wonder if we should shift the timing of facilities so that it's never, like, right after our board meeting? And then maybe it's a bit more timely, so when the stuff goes out, it'd be fast.
It really does.
Yeah. Elementary transportation project, Frank provided an update on it already, so I'll cut this a little bit short.
I, I will provide just a real quick update on the rest of it. Myself and Jeff and the architects did a complete walkthrough of the elementary school, and we think we have a pretty sound plan, so they can actually start now, you know, looking through and seeing what pricing will be, and then giving us a lot of alternates. Because again, depending on when we go off a bid and when we go for approval in a referendum, we could, you know, be at the right timing, be able to get some, a lot of alternates in. But again, like I said, it really is dependent on this cost as well. So we're getting closer to having a full cost estimate. I'm hoping by the end of July, we should really kind of understand the scope of what we're looking at. I have a huge wishlist, we met with the staff, we almost added everything that the staff wanted. Almost everything they wanted. The coffee machine didn't have it. But besides that, like, we really did, you know, do a lot of it. So we're now just hoping what we can put in, see how much of a cost. Almost there.
We're done.
And the next facility meeting, you said, is?
I do not know. I'm sure it's next week.
Next week.
So next week, next facility.
It's always shortly after one of these.
Facilities Committee is next Tuesday.
At what time?
Four o'clock.
Tuesday, four o'clock, facilities.
Uh, let me move that.
We have to move.
We'll work, yeah, he said, I'm in, I'm in New York Tuesday, Thursday.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Yeah. We can go.
Okay. All right. Okay, so next will be policy, Rachel Chair. Rachel, there's four policies on us, on our agenda. So if you, I think it'd be helpful, if you could mention them, and whether we're going to vote on them or they were first read, and if they're just little changes, so we know what we're, I mean.
Yep, I'll, I'll highlight them.
Okay, highlight them so that when we get to these four that are on the agenda, we know what we're.
Absolutely. Policy's been, been hopping. We met yesterday, because we like to meet all the time. And, and we had a nice big agenda, and then Frank added to it, because we like that too. So we had some additions at the beginning that are not on this, today's agenda at all, but just referring to them because it was interesting to hear that open meeting law has been changing. And it's now going to potentially include the opportunity for remote attendance without all the hoops that you had to jump through before if you were going to attend remotely. Now you can just stream in, which has been part of our COVID experience, but it's working into our new normal.
You mean attendance avoidance?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Yeah, so you guys.
It's not policy yet. Give me a minute.
In the comfort of your.
Yes, I know, we'll all just jot on the bottom strip. So also, it seems like we might need a policy to select for UPK. This is new. But it also comes with an added bonus, because we love these, that we have to have some sort of lottery. That's what we arranged that, it was great. But one of the questions we had when UPK came up was, is there any way to make this more available to folks of limited means for whom UPK might not have been an option without this? So if there seems to be a way to do that possibly, it's all a little muddy right now. But it might make it that we can enhance the opportunities for folks who might not have otherwise had the opportunity, UPK, clarification needed. So then we talked about executive session, 2330. And there's some changes that were recommended for it, but we were talking about the idea of, basically, there are some things that would not be covered in the executive session because they're already covered potentially in IDEA or FERPA, two acronyms, which I'm not going to get into. But basically, other laws cover these topics, and they don't necessarily need to be part of our policy, but maybe we want to mention the fact that they're covered by those other laws. So we want to make sure that our policy is clear as to why it is the way it is. So we're not touching that one today. 1400 is a policy that was revised. We've looked at that for a bit, and it's a policy on public complaints. So we want to make sure that people, not that they want to complain, but they want to bring things to our attention. So policy number 1400 is a revision, and it just requires a vote for whether or not the board accepts the revision. It's relatively streamlined in the revisions, we're not egregious in any way. That is on the, on the agenda, item 7.3.
Oh, 7.4. 7.3, I'm sorry.
Yep. 1405, I think we covered that one, and that is a second read, right? And it is, that one we, we had looked at previously, and that one is just, I use the word complaints again, but complaints about federally funded programs. We never had that policy, it's just something that's referred to, and we thought we might as well add that one in so people understand the process and the concept of it. So that one would be a second read, we would be deciding whether we wanted to vote it into our policies. Policy 5152, we did not discuss on the agenda because it's already up for second read as well. That's item 7.5, and that's the admission of foreign exchange students. And that is the actual title of the policy. It was slightly different, we did not have the word exchange previously. We can move on from that. Policy number 6900 is an interesting thing. This is a first read, we do not vote upon it. This is the concept of disposal of district property, and this is going to roll in some different policies, citing for everyone. We would get rid of, which I've never seen done ever, get rid of a new policy. It's called an abolishment resolution. If we decide to adopt 6900, we could get rid of, well, this version of 6900, because we already have a 6900. If we adopt this one, then we could get rid of 8631, should we so choose, an 8631R, which include the disposal of electronic items, because this would cover all of that, streamlining our policy book by so much. So if, if we go through with that, this is just the first read though, because this is a concept we don't want to just rush into. And then we moved on to 6645, but Jim didn't join us, so we're going to come, the policy committee, whoever's upon it, will come around to 6645. It's about capitalization, not of letters and punctuation, but of things. And we want to include the table for the capitalization threshold in our policy. There were several, several samples, we liked part of one and part of another, but all fixed assets can go, and this, this should definitely have Jim.
I've already been told I'm joining the next meeting.
Awesome, whenever it should happen. And then we have 4526, we talked about this one, computer use and instruction. It's already pretty good, but then there's the regulation, 4526R. And Sean, our worky, our intrepid IT person, is going to have the first crack at cleaning it up. As well as 5695, registering devices. And we want to have some liabilities put in there so that the district is not liable. There's a lot with the one-to-one thing and personal devices and the network. We want to make sure that everything is very clear so that when folks come in with their personal devices, they're not accessing and so on. And I'm not going to say anything else because it's tech. We also talked about the 2160, which we've talked about here several times, and there were a couple more things. We were moving that one to the July policy meeting as well, so that's going to be a fun meeting. The idea of when a gift is given, what do you do? If someone gives you a gift that exceeds the amount? And what if you're friends with them? And all of these things, they, they really do need to have some sort of a protocol potentially. So we want to make sure we give that the due time. And you all should just watch them and say, you can blame me for that today. We're not blaming, this is a big point, a very good point. We also talked about the code of conduct. We went through it because in July, we adopted again after the public hearing. And we reviewed it, we got it ready for that July meeting. And we also discussed the fact that we may look into the idea of adding a provision as Gilderland is looking into, or has already done, for gun storage as part of the, that would be fit into the code of conduct. That is something we can discuss as a board, not today, but in the near future. And we can add that as a provision to the code of conduct with resolution later on, should the board so choose. And at that point, we said that our, our hour had become an hour and a half, and we were, we were due to be done.
That's pretty good, you got a little bit done in an hour and a half.
Yeah, so, so really, we're only voting on the two. There's not as much on the agenda as there could be.
We're voting on three on the agenda.
Yes, voting, voting on three, yes. And the fourth one is first read.
Yep. All right, thank you very much, Rachel.
Any questions? Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so, so new business, why don't we group then 7.1 through 7.5? That would be approval of resolution, fund bills, purchase of bus, buses, and then the policies, 1400, 1405, 5152.1. Brett, Rachel?
Yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
Go in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, 7.7, acceptance of donations, very generous donation, fifth grade class and from Bordersville PTA. Can I have a motion to accept them?
I agree with it.
Second?
Second.
Go in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Other business, opportunity for board to rehearse, any additional comments?
Thank you for your.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, I noticed that our board member-elect is in the audience.
Welcome, Rob.
Robin, glad you're here. Thank you for attending. Congratulations.
July 6. Be there. 6:45, right here.
We'll reach out to you before.
Okay, and then dates to remember, July 6, again, a Wednesday, 6:45 here. Next Monday at 4 o'clock, we have executive session for the, yeah, personnel.
3:30.
Oh, 3:30. Is it 3:30 or 4?
What? I have 3:30. I have 3:30.
3:30, Monday, Monday for here, yes.
Monday, this coming Monday.
This coming Mondays?
What is this coming Monday?
This is executive session. This is Executive Session.
We had trouble scheduling it?
Yeah.
Lots of trouble?
You said yes.
You said you could go.
Okay, Monday to 13?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't have that on the calendar.
There you go. And that will be in the distant learning room, correct?
3:30?
3:30, yep. Okay, now, because that worked for you before you added down, yes. Okay. And then, graduation will be inside. And what time would you like us... We usually meet... Seems to all be hopeful, like...
How about I ask the principal to get all that information?
Oh, okay. We usually meet with you in your office.
Usually, we're in your office for a while.
Because that's a whole new thing for me, too, by the way.
It's like a hangout and whatever.
We hang out with the superintendent in your office, usually about quarter after 6:00. And then, they come and take our picture, and they give us...
Little bonding time.
Little bonding time, and then they line us up from your office. I mean, that's Wade's one spirit.
I'll make sure that they know that, because this is all new to me.
And it's new to the...
Because, yeah, this is, you know, we expect you to...
We're gonna provide a, you know, full buffet.
Because we're going back to the tradition.
Don't skip on that, right?
And then, we also are budgeting then for the outside stage and all the other things that are there. Because that was a COVID expense that was due to COVID.
I like it, though. Can we... So, small history. When I was here, it was always outside, for years, for forever. It was always outside. And it was awesome being outside. It was just so much... I don't know, maybe people don't like that anymore. Maybe I'm just nostalgic, but it'd be awesome to be... There was always a tent.
And which is also expensive.
Which is expensive, but you could always fundraise for a tent. Or, you know, it doesn't have to come out of a general fund, right?
The PAC is air-conditioned, though.
PAC is air-conditioned.
And that's why they changed it.
Yeah, just, yeah, it felt so cool.
Yes, treats are...
It was special. I mean, not a lot of schools have the facilities to be able to do that.
We subwound a couple of times.
Right, that's when they changed it, all due to weather. It's that tent went flying down one turn. And so, it was all changed due to weather. But you know what? The in-boy one is lovely.
Just saying, keep an open mind in the future years.
And it said video here. That was really expensive, right? They never had that.
The outside, so just, you know, we actually scoped out tents. It is exactly the same price to do what we did and renting a tent. And renting the tent doesn't include the chairs and everything else, so...
Oh, for the stage and stuff.
Yeah, so, I mean, tents are very expensive. And, you know, I get the fundraising idea. I mean, personally, though, I don't like taxing them any more than they need to, so I ask them for more money when we have the ability to do it in an auditorium. It's already budgeted. We already have the funds for it. It just, to me, it just makes sense to have it. I get the outside, though. It's been lovely having it at the satellite field, but it is inexpensive. We don't have it.
So anyway, that's good with you. The board usually meets with you at 6:15. We get, bring you down, and then you're... While you fix each other's little caps and stuff, it's fun. It's a nice...
In Bobby pants.
Yeah, in Bobby pants. So, what did you say, in gourmet...
I gotta surprise us?
Oh, I gotta get here?
All right, so...
Decorations, Frank.
Decorations, yeah, there you go.
And drawing.
So any other dates, upcoming dates? I don't think so. Okay, then, may I look at that? 18.
18, so you unfortunately, I don't... You never broke Doreen's record, I suppose, for the shortest.
No, I have the shortest. When I chilled in with her, when I...
Oh, that's right. No, you didn't. It was technically you.
The first time I ever chaired anything, it's like, okay, can I group one?
So you do hold the record.
I hold the record. I think it was 7.5.
Full, non-special board meeting.
Yes, yep.
And we would have stood there of having really, you know, I think you got a few in a row that were...
Yeah. But, you know, again, that goes... I personally think that's the way we set an agenda now. We used to, before I started as president, we would... The dreaded thing, policy and agenda setting were one committee. I mean, you know, that just doesn't work.
And it was almost never policy, right?
It was never policy, and so... And then, you know, just having board members chair these committees has made my job so much easier and not sitting on, because then I can be a reference to... I can be a reference, but everybody who's chaired committees, it's been awesome, because I think the committees have really turned into great board committees, board-like committees with, you know, just exceptional advances than what they used to be. So that makes for an agenda, and then, when you set an agenda and it's posted for the board ahead of time, and you guys are great at reviewing it ahead of time, then you get through... Like, when you say you're having the meeting from 7:00 to 8:30, for the public's sake, too, especially if they're looking at, they're here for the last agenda item, that they're not here for three hours waiting for that. I think it's really important.
That is, and we're still in the board to be heard section, I think, right? So we can talk for a minute. But it is, you know, one of the best things that you did, a really incredible thing for us, that more conciseness, more structure, and that, those changes, you know, I mean... I think you, me, and Jim were the only ones here for when it was much more... I mean, they're... It got long, and they got, and it was kind of meandering at times. There was talking back and forth between the audience and the board. There were a lot of things that, you know, we don't have, that we shouldn't be doing. And just stuff that you put in place, those guardrails to keep us on the straight and narrow, it just works so much better. We're able to get our work done. And oftentimes, I'll be here till 10 o'clock at night, which is a bonus, too.
And then, yeah. And again, you know, we have a superintendent who, we're confident, that follows up on what the public is saying when they make a public comment. We don't just, you know, shoo, shoo, don't say anything no we want within the three minutes, that everybody, your fellow neighbor gets to say the same thing and not have to rush home, because they've been waiting an hour to do something with their children, or for whatever reason. So, again, you know...
I do think that's a great legacy, Lee, and I hope that we keep it up, right?
One thing I think we should revisit that had been brought up by an audience member a while back, and I think Trish had brought it up, was the idea of a public participation moment at the end of the meeting, whether we want that or not.
Yeah, and that's a good retreat, I know. Yeah, and I think, again...
I haven't seen anything for a board.
I have. I have. I have just... Well, we have to... We have to make... No, we don't.
None of that stuff should happen until after.
She's keeping notes.
Oh, I thought she said she scheduled a board retreat.
No, 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 no. I just keep notes of things, like, so that when something comes up, I think, oh, that'd be great for the board.
We don't know when the board retreat is yet.
When we get to the point where we can plan a board retreat.
Probably figure that out at the reorg.
Yeah, yeah. And Tim, you know, I think he can... At one point, it just, the reason that it went, it's because it just kept going and going. But then, we did switch.
I'm not even saying that I have a position on that. I just think that it has come up.
Yeah, the history of it. But I think it worked, just from the history of it. But then, we changed it to comments only that, on items at the end that were discussed at the meeting. So not new comments. And perhaps, and it's definitely something to be relooked at, especially now that we put that three-minute... That makes all the difference in the world, that the three minutes, you know...
I only brought it up because we were asked to do it.
Yeah, no, no, I think it's a perfect retreat. Okay, so with all of that said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No, I'm not.
So move. Yeah, why don't you?
Can I?
I don't know.
Maybe it's not legit, that she's always...
You could do the second.
Do it.
All right. I'll move it.
We'll all second it.
Okay.